We're on.
Good evening. I would like to welcome Dan Webb with Milton Community Church, who will lead us in tonight's invocation.
Evening Mayor, Council. Let's pray. God, our Father, we come before you tonight, and we remember that in your word, the Bible, you tell us that we are met every morning with your new mercy, your new grace. Which means that today, this morning, whether we were actively thinking about it or not, you met us with your kindness and your goodness. And tomorrow, just the same, in many ways, you will show your grace to us through new mercies and your kindness towards us. Father, we praise you that you are a good and a gracious God, that you are kind and compassionate towards those who put their trust and their hope in you. And we pray for our city. I pray in specific for this evening, for this meeting, and for this council, that it would be profitable for our families and for our community. That it would also be profitable on an individual level, that we would meet real and tangible needs. Father, I pray for those on this council in particular. I pray that you would strengthen and protect their families. Would you strengthen marriages? Would you strengthen parents who are caught up in raising children in different schools and ages? Father, give them discipline, give them discernment in the best ways to lead their homes and to raise their kids in our community. And for the meeting that is before the council tonight, Father, I pray that you would provide your wisdom. Would you be in every word of conversation and dialogue as steps are taken to strengthen our community? To establish rules and processes that are productive for our people, that bring about flourishing? And I ask just first and foremost, Father, you would go before these men and women in these decisions, that your spirit would be in them? And that you would bring success, and that you would make each step and decision effective and speedy. Father, I do commit this night to you, and we pray all of these things in your name. Amen.
Thank you. I would like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council from Monday, March 4th, 2024, to order. The city strongly recommends that you review tonight's agenda carefully. If you wish to speak on any item on the agenda, then please bring your comment cards to the clerk as soon as possible. While the Milton rules allow speaker to turn in their comment card up until the clerk calls the agenda item, once the agenda item is called, no more comment cards can be accepted. Will city clerk please call the roll and make general announcements?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before I call roll for the March 4th, 2024, regular meeting, I would like to remind those in attendance, please silence all cell phones at this time. Those who are attending the meeting and would like to make a public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to the agenda item being called. All speakers, when called to the podium, will be asked to identify yourself by name, address, and organization before beginning your comment. If you are representing an organization, a notarized affidavit is required stating you have the authority to speak on behalf of that organization. Please review tonight's agenda, and if you would like to make a public comment, please bring your cards to me now. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited. Please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outburst, or dialogue with any person speaking. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll, Mayor and Council, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Peyton Jameson.
Here.
Councilmember Andrea Verhoff.
Here.
Councilmember Doug Haney.
Here.
Councilmember Juliette Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Carol Cokerly.
Here.
Councilmember Jan Jacobus.
Present.
And Councilmember Phil Cranmer.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum. Would everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, next is the approval of the meeting agenda. I'd like to turn over to Councilmember Juliette Johnson.
With respect to the farm winery alcohol application and for, and following consultation with the city attorney, I hereby announce my decision to recuse from any and all activity regarding this applications for the reasons previously announced.
Uh, thank you. Madam Clerk, how many public comment cards do we have?
We have over thirty.
Okay, I would like to move the, um, new business item number, uh, I mean, new business item letter B, agenda item number two four dash zero nine two, um, before public comment. And I would like to defer agenda item two four dash zero nine one and agenda item two four dash zero seven one to the next regularly scheduled city council meeting. Is that good, Ken?
It is.
Okay.
And move it up to where?
Uh, we're moving the, um, the unfinished business item, agenda, agenda number. Those two are going to the next regular scheduled meeting, but the swearing in of the Milton Sustainability Advisory Committee would be before public comment. Okay?
Do you want me to make a motion?
Sure.
All right. Mayor, I make a motion that we move agenda item twenty four dash zero nine two and defer agenda item twenty four dash zero nine one and defer agenda item twenty four dash zero seven one to, um, before public comment.
Yeah, um. The next scheduled council meeting.
I would ask if you don't mind, just to make sure everybody's microphones are pulled.
Okay. But I said defer on both of them. You need defer to the next scheduled meeting?
That one's being moved, that was being deferred, yeah, to the next scheduled council.
All right, so the Milton Sustainability Advisory Committee is tonight, right before public comment. And the other two agenda items, number twenty four dash zero seven one, twenty four dash zero nine one, are moved to, deferred to the next scheduled city council meeting. Thank you.
Good, okay. Any, uh, any discussion on that motion?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
That's unanimous. Okay, we will move on to the new business item that we just deferred. If the city clerk will please call, say on that item.
Mayor, that new moved business item is consideration of a resolution appointing or reappointing members to the City of Milton Sustainability Advisory Committee by appointing a board member for District One, post two, and District Two, post one. It is agenda item number twenty four zero nine two. Mayor Jameson?
Okay, I will turn it over to the council member of District One, post two, first.
All right, that's me. Cindy, you ready? Uh, it's my, my privilege to nominate Cindy Hester as my proposed appointee to the Sustainability Committee. In the time that I've gotten to know Cindy, we have bonded, as she is an avid reader of all things environmentally friendly and sustainability, and it's been a pleasure to learn from her. Um, I know that Cindy, you will enjoy this committee tremendously. You have Emily there as your leader, and it's come together, and you will make a wonderful addition. So hand it over to my fellow colleagues to make the motion and approve.
Um, do we need to do two separate motions, Ken, or do you want to announce both members at the same time?
We need to do two separate motions.
Okay, all right. Um, I would like to open it for a motion for the, um, Milton Sustainability Advisory Committee appointing board member for District One, post two. I'll make a motion to appoint Cindy to the Milton Sustainability Advisory Committee.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Cranmer and a second from Councilmember Jacobus to appoint Cindy Hester to District One, post two, to the Milton Sustainability Advisory Committee. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Um, we'll go ahead and do the other person too, and then we'll swear them in at the same time. Um, so I would like to turn it over to District Two, post one, council member.
Um, I'd like to appoint Ashley Logan to the Sustainability Committee. She is a native Atlantan and has lived in Milton for twenty five years. Her background is in IT consulting and project management. She is passionate about her environmental sustainability with primary interests for improving recycling, reducing food waste, and increasing renewable energy use. For the past five years, she has worked on various food waste reduction initiatives, and she enjoys outdoor activity such as hiking, rafting, and biking. I think she is here.
I don't know. Okay, I'd like to open it for a motion for Ashley Logan for District Two, post one, for the Milton Sustainability Advisory Committee.
Make a motion to add Ashley Logan to the Milton Sustainability Advisory Committee.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Haney and a second from Councilmember Verhoff to approve Ashley Logan to the District Two, post one spot, to the Milton Sustainability Advisory Committee. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. If Ms. Hester or Ms. Logan will come up, I'll swear you in.
All right, raise your right hand and pre-activate. I am solemnly swearing firm. I will faithfully perform the duties of Milton Sustainability Advisor Committee of the city and have the support and defend the charter thereof well as the Constitution and the laws of the state of Georgia and states of the country.
You sign?
Sign this real quick.
And you'll sign this one too.
Okay.
You're next. Yes, you'll sign too. Thank you very much. One more great picture. I'll take this. Thank you.
Three, two, you want to do this? You want me to go first? Okay. Two, one. Okay, I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a point of order, if I may.
Let's hear it, Ken.
So, Councilmember Johnson, you did such a lovely recusal notice and wanted to make sure, but I think the recusal was from the adoption of the agenda, and I think you voted on that. And so I think the way to cure that is going to be for us to do a motion for reconsideration, which you can vote on, which will then set the table again for us to adopt the agenda as amended, and then we'll make another motion to adopt the agenda, which you could, which you're not going to vote on. Is that okay?
Yes, then no.
That's correct. Yes, on the motion reconsideration, no on the actual motion to adopt the agenda as amended. Mr. Mayor, the first step is a motion for reconsideration with respect to the adoption of the agenda.
Okay, I would like to open it for a motion to, uh, for reconsideration of the adoption of the agenda.
Make a motion as stated.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Jacobus and a second from Councilmember Johnson to approve the motion to reconsider, um, to approve the adoption of the reconsideration of the agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. We will now go into approving the agenda.
The amended agenda, as you all discussed, same motion, except subject to Councilmember Johnson's recusal statement. Thank you.
Okay, open it for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the amended agenda as stated with Councilwoman Johnson's recusal.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Haney and a second from Councilmember Cranmer to approve the, uh, adoption of the amended agenda with Councilmember Johnson's recusal. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, uh, next is general public comment. Uh, I know we do have general public comment, and if anyone is here to speak on the winery, please come to general public comment uh, right now and turn in your comment cards if you have not already. Thank you. The next item is general public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and the city council and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Please remember this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of the city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record. You will have five minutes for remarks. The city encourages you to review the agenda, and if you wish to speak, to bring your comment cards to the city clerk right now. And I will ask the city clerk to please call the first public comment.
I invite Brad Champion to the podium, please.
Good evening, council members. Brad Champion, one four three eight five Cogburn Road. Um, I'm here in support of the Rosenburgers in pursuit of their permanent liquor license. First, I want to commend the council on its commitment to fostering a vibrant community. Rosenburgers share the same commitment, although their dream of opening a beautiful tasting room has been taken off the table, and I personally feel that this is a detriment to the entire community. Alas, this is their decision that they have made. I really want to address property rights. The Fifth Amendment and the Fourteenth Amendments of the U.S. Constitution, as well as Article One, Section One of the Georgia Constitution, all guarantee property rights. Zoning regulations must be reasonable and not deprive landowners of the beneficial use of their property. A farm winery clearly falls within the reasonable use of agricultural land. To deny them the right to sell the fruits of their labor would truly set a terrible precedent that says the City of Milton is not open for business. In the Fourteenth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution, this amendment guarantees equal protection of the laws to all persons. This means that a city council cannot base its decision on discriminatory or unfounded concerns about what might the Rosenburgers do with their private home. Denying the license solely based on such concerns would not only be unfair to them, but could also raise legal issues concerning equal protection under the law. I understand the city has had to retain counsel in this manner. I'm appalled at some of the social media posts that I have, that neighbors have had suggesting that the community has a right to know who was visiting the Rosenburgers at their private home. We moved to this community because we wanted to escape the overreach of government and not participate in its abuse. The type of language is borderline communism and is certainly not good for the image or the residents of this city. Always remember, you could be next on the receiving end of what you are asking for to be banned or controlled. This sounds very familiar to me, remembering what happened during the COVID crisis in the state of California, where Gavin Newsom was enjoying his meal at one of the most expensive restaurants in the country while telling its citizens that you had to stay in your home, you couldn't visit your family members. There are people in this audience who have made comments similar to that, and it's completely unfair and unfounded. Interestingly, our community already boasts a successful farm winery operating under similar, similar conditions. Denying the license solely for the Rosenburgers raises the question of unequal treatment. Both businesses operate within the same zoning regulations and adhere to state standards. Denying a license to one while granting it to another sets a concerning precedent, and it potentially violates the Fourteenth Amendment's guarantee of equal protection under the law. I encourage the council to engage in open and constructive dialogue with all parties involved. Jim and Darren are committed to working collaboratively with the community to find solutions that address concerns while allowing their business to flourish. We believe such an approach fosters a stronger community and ensures everyone's voices are heard. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Will you please call the next speaker?
I invite Bill Hommer, Hommer, to the podium.
Name is Bill Hommer, two thirty-five Weatherwood Circle. I live in Providence Plantation subdivision. I'm here to speak, um, in opposition to the winery. Um, ten years ago, our subdivision was an embarrassment. I was embarrassed to invite my friends to it. It was not well-kept. Prior boards, um, did not do a whole lot to make sure people took care of their property. And, um, myself and several others kind of talked about doing something about that, so they're all here, the ones who were doing that, they're still there, they're still here helping, so, um. We, uh, put the board together. Um, we changed some covenants and get some teeth into the covenant so we could enforce some things. Talked to the neighbors, um, and that was, I've been on the board for ten years now. Um, four or five as president this past year, I stepped down. Um, over that ten years, we have continued to work on our subdivision to bring it up to what we felt was the standard of Milton. We've redid, we redid the sign, put in new LED lighting, sod, new trees, new bushes. Every, uh, street post and street sign in the neighborhood, we put money together to have them all made new and brought up to, again, what we thought our current standard was. So, it's been a lot of work by the people in this room, um, to get this subdivision to a place where it'd be, you know, a great place to, to raise a family and to bring people to bring friends to. So, um, when I heard about the winery, um, I kind of heard it in passing. I knew a little bit about it, and I said, oh, it's a winery. Somebody said, oh, it's a, don't worry about it, it's a rich man's folly, or it's just some guy who wants to grow some grapes. I didn't really get a lot of information. And, um, it's my fault, but, um, uh, COVID had taken about ninety percent of my, uh, my inventory away in my supply chain, so all my energy was focused on that. I also had a son and fiance were in a very serious car accident a month before their, their wedding. And then my daughter, a month before college, was diagnosed with something that would scare the hell out of any parent, so it wasn't my time, and it just wasn't my fight. I had a personal relationship with Jim. We weren't friends. We'd known each other for years. He brought his family to the HOA events. Over time, we work out at the same gym, and I, I know him to be a very sharp, very entrepreneurial, uh, guy and friendly guy, very amiable guy. Um, so, um, I said, you know, it's just, just wasn't my time to, to, to get into a fight and to put my energy there. But I, I did want to make a couple of comments about, um, uh, kind of what has happened, and as I've thought through things, um, you know, I know Jim's initial letter was that he was going to be building a home and a barn for an animal, for animals. So I, I don't think that, that's, I don't think we had the full understanding of what was going on from day one. So I think it's been his dream. Um, I've heard it's, I know it's been his dream, and I just, I'm kind of surprised at, at, at the myop, the myopathy of just not seeing what a problem this would be. And I think that's what you're hearing from these folks, um, for the last month, and I commend them for all the work they've done, uh, and, and bringing this to the council. But, um, what, what concerns me is the work the council done to also, um, help Mr. Rosenberger. Um, it, it seems that there's, there's members that really want this for some reason that I can't quite figure out, or no one has told me yet. Um, it's pretty simple. I Googled wineries in a subdivision and found two on Google. One up in North Georgia, in a community that, um, is for wine lovers, and another one in a winery that they sold lots to. So I didn't find anywhere else. But I'm concerned that the concessions that, that are being talked about was for Jim to be able to invite, um, uh, family and bona fide friends. Okay, well, Jim's a smart guy. He's gotten to this point. Um, he's, he's planned this from day one, and we're kind of trying to catch up to what his plan was. I feel the councils had to try and catch up, and we've had to catch up. Now that we see what the whole picture is, this was a plan from day one to create this event, wine center, whatever you want to call it. I, I don't really call it a winery. This is a wine bar. This is Matilda's with a liquor license in our neighborhood. Okay, so doesn't fly with me. It doesn't fly with, as you can see, uh, the rest of my neighbors. But, um, he could go on Facebook and create a bona fide friends of the winery page. Everybody pays a dollar. Anybody could be a friend. Anybody could be a bona fide friend. So his letter said, I'm not going to do any public tastings. Well, so what? I mean, I can create a Facebook group and have a hundred people there.
Time's expired.
It's real easy. And, um, if I could, just one, one other thing, I apologize.
Sorry, how much longer do you have, sir?
Uh, just one more sentence here. In his letter to our subdivision he dropped off last week, this, he said the three things that could happen. The third one really concerned me. The city denies their application, at which time we file suit against the city and appeal the, the denial decision. Based on our legal counsel, we feel confident that we would prevail. And if we were forced to file suit and maintain our legal right to a Georgia farm winery license, we would no longer be willing to limit our operations, including public tastings at our property.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Will you please call the next speaker?
Mr. Rick Brown. Okay, uh, Mr. Rick Brown at nine five five Trayburn Run and is in opposition. Mr. Jim Rosenberg.
Jim Rosenberg, one three five five Black Marlin. Hello, and thank you for allowing me the chance to speak tonight. Wasn't planning on speaking since our farm winery application has been deferred, but I feel compelled due to some of the new narrative that has recently surfaced. From the beginning, we have always been From the beginning, we have always been transparent about our plans to pursue a farm winery. Our very first communication to the city in 2020 was titled Farm Winery License Application. Over the past three years, we've responded to each request from the city with transparency, professionalism, and patience. Yet even with this grace, we continue to be villainized by our opposition. Just last week, one of our neighbors and friends was denied access to our neighborhood by a car blocking the gate. Our friend was harassed simply because she supported our winery. Another neighbor and friend who also supports the winery has been abused through emails and social media postings. When we first heard in late 2023 that people objected to our project because of noise and the potential for drunk driving, we voluntarily decided to eliminate essentially all traffic in and out of the neighborhood related to the winery. No tastings, no purchasing, no consumption. The only reason we choose this more difficult path was to satisfy public concern and hopefully secure a license that allows us to distribute wine elsewhere, off-site from the Black Marlin address. With the traffic and safety concerns removed, new arguments were manufactured that a liquor license should never be issued in a neighborhood. Yet there are countless golf and tennis communities that operate a seven-day-a-week bar. Additionally, are we supposed to assume that not a single resident opposing us does not serve alcohol in their home or consume alcohol at any of the nearby restaurants? There has been talk about our winery devaluing property values, yet every real estate professional we've had visited the property suggests that our improvements in both land and building have increased the surrounding values. In fact, any of the council that has visited our property, I think you'll concur that the property is pretty amazing. This past week, while we were out of the country, we watched our opposition publish videos questioning the number of friends or families we can have. Seriously? How many friends do you guys have? Does someone governing authority monitor who goes to your house or stop by? This is an invasion of our privacy, our property rights, and it's something that should never happen anywhere. We deferred tonight's meeting because we hope to come up with a resolution with the city to make all parties whole. The city council must look beyond the bullying and approve our farm winery based on the approvals we secured in 2021 and the fact that we have followed the law every step of the way. I was told by our council that if we go to court, we have a very good chance of prevailing. If we do prevail, all the concessions we've made would be obsolete, and the license would at a minimum revert back to the original condition set back in 2021. That's not our goal, but if we have to go through litigation and expenses, that's a big deal, and that's going to cost us money. And yeah, maybe those things are taken off the table. Let me make one thing crystal clear. Whether we hang our winery license on Black Marlin Lane under very, very strict guidelines or at some other Georgia farm, other Georgia farm, we will have a farm winery, and we're going to have friends. Whether we operate anything at our house, that's to be determined. When I made the commitment not to have tastings, public tastings, I just didn't want someone to say, aha! I'm like, well, that was my brother. Seriously? It was really done to make sure that the people opposing us were not nitpicking every time we had someone come to our house. It wasn't about trying to sneak friends and family in under some online social club. That's baloney. It was simply done based on the scrutiny we've been under to simply make sure that anytime a relative comes over, the police aren't showing up. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Will you please call the next speaker?
I invite Kristi Hayes.
Kristi Hayes, 13585 Hopewell Road. I'm here tonight to address my concerns about Agenda Item 23-304, listed under Public Hearing, specifically the part that states a deferral for negotiations between the applicant and the city to resolve their issues. I find it highly suspicious that, not for the first time, you put an agenda item under public hearing and then state you plan to defer to a later date. How can you defer an item on the agenda before a motion was made and a vote was taken to defer? Additionally, the language used on the agenda about pending negotiations with the applicant leads one to conclude the council has been discussing and making decisions about a public hearing item behind closed doors and away from public scrutiny. According to the Georgia Municipal Association website dated February 20th of 2018, under Meetings Procedure Organization and Public Participation, it states that official decisions may only be made in open meetings of the elected body. At such meetings, issues are publicly debated and action is taken. Local officials must resist the temptation to make final decisions prior to official meetings and then rubber stamp them at the official meeting and should avoid even the appearance of doing so. These neighbors have had this issue deferred time and time again, and the public has no information about what council thinks, other than secondhand information provided through public comments. The citizens of Milton deserve better. We deserve an open debate on a liquor license application in a neighborhood, as this would set a very dangerous precedent in the city of Milton. Negotiations outside of open meetings is the very issue the Georgia Municipal Association warned officials to avoid. We deserve to have this issue debated publicly and a vote to be taken that is not a rubber stamp of behind-the-scenes negotiations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Will you please call the next speaker?
Teresa Meeks.
My name is Teresa Meeks, and I live at 125 Providence Plantation Drive. We built the house there 29 years ago and moved our, and our children like in ninth grade, eighth grade, because it was a wonderful community to move to. And I'm just very concerned about the winery being there with our, you know, property values going down. I know he says that they won't, but I think people move to this area for their children to go to school in wonderful schools. And so they're looking for communities they can afford, which ours is an affordable community, which is, you have a new one now, it's $3 million or whatever. But we're at the time now where we're about ready to retire, and I'm sort of concerned, is anybody going to move in my little subdivision if a winery's at the back? Now, I saw the property before anyone, you know, Bill had bought it or anything. It's gorgeous. It's spectacular property. You know, and I wish he could have what he wants, but not going through my, not going by my house. You know, Providence Plantation, you know, it's not gated. Anybody can just come through there. His property is gated. So anybody that wants to go through there, they have to get permission to, you know, have the codes or whatever to go in, but not where we live. And anybody that goes to his house has to go by my house. You know, we have lots and lots of children in the neighborhood now, and I'm concerned about that. I know he says he's not going to do a tasting or whatever, but I'm not educated enough to know, once he gets the license, can he do what he wants to do? If he sells his property, can they do whatever they want to do? And that's what concerns me, because it's just, you know, nobody here, like the guy that got up here, the first guy, he doesn't live in our subdivision. You know, no one's driving by his house like that. He's not thinking about what it's like if you actually live in the subdivision. And I have no animosity against Jim, his family. You know, that's not what this is about. This is just about, you know, trying to keep our community like it is and being able to sell our home for what we think our values are now. But I, I heard a new neighbor that had just recently purchased was talking about she might not have bought it if she'd known the winery was going to be there. So that's what concerns me too. Thank you.
Thank you. Will you please call the next speaker?
Jeff Moen.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Moen. I live at 130 Providence Plantation Drive, and I oppose the liquor license at 13555 Black Marlin Lane. Providence Plantation is an awesome neighborhood with people who respect and care for each other. We have a growing number of children and special needs people who have a safe and a very quiet place to live. Recently, a few members of the Milton City Council were at my house, and I heard them refer to the liquor license situation as awful but lawful. I must confess, I'd never heard that expression before. Let me clearly state that we do not want to exchange our current awesome neighborhood for an awful deal. Also, I recently read the letter that Mr. Rosenberg attached to all the mailboxes in Providence Plantation, and like Bill Hommer was struck by the false concessions and even more by the final remark. Quote, "The city denies our application. We will file suit..." dot, 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 "and would no longer be willing to limit our operations, including the public tastings at our property." Close quote. Now, in my business life, if someone were to propose a deal to me in my office and finish with a Godfather Styles threat, take it, or worse will happen, I would escort that dealmaker personally out of my office and shut the door. No, thank you. Again, in my business life, if my paid advisors were to push an awful but lawful deal to me and tell me I'm ungrateful if I don't accept it, I would walk them out of my office and find new advisors. Now, that's my business life. I can't see myself doing any less for a threat to my family and my neighborhood. In the data dump that our neighborhood residents and attorneys reviewed, it came to my attention that Mr. Rosenberg clearly stated his intent from the very beginning. A private event space for weddings, dinners, private corporate events, and private parties. It looked a lot like the Painted Horse deal to me that has been a major problem for the residents of that neighborhood. Let me be clear. We do not want a private event space serving liquor in our quiet, peaceful neighborhood. It didn't work for the properties adjacent to Painted Horse, and we do not want Painted Horse version two in our neighborhood. The Providence Plantation neighborhood of 40 families should not have to suffer the risk, responsibility of policing the Milton City ordinances, laws, protection of our children and our property. We don't want the foolish and irresponsible liquor license of one family to endanger the 40-plus families and 50-plus children. Now, if the city managers made mistakes, hold those people accountable. If the applicant didn't bother to inform himself of the changing ordinances and his inability to qualify, don't make the taxpayers of Milton responsible to pay him off. Deny the license, clean up your staff, and let's not let a Painted Horse Two make an awesome neighborhood awful. Thank you.
Thank you. Will you please call the next speaker?
Allison Idex.
My name is Allison Idex, and I live at 115 Gladwin Court. I strongly oppose the approval of the liquor license for the proposed winery on Black Marlin. No one is denying the Rosenburgers their right to follow their dream and to open a commercial business in a commercial district. The issue here is whether or not to allow a private residence to receive an alcohol license. I can imagine that each one of you is tired of hearing and talking about the winery, the license, the public record request, the amount of time reserved for public comments, and the audit. I certainly am tired of talking about it. However, as long as you continue to do nothing to correct the injustices perpetrated by this council surrounding these issues, we will continue to have this conversation. Before you become too complacent with the knowledge that you are not one of the three here who created this mess, you need to recognize that you are now just as culpable as they are. You have had the ability to request the same paperwork, find the same discrepancies, dig into the same documents, and discover the same evidence as we have, and yet you have not done that. At the risk of sounding hyperbolic, the only thing necessary for evil to triumph in the world is for good men to do nothing. I am calling for you to stand up and be the good men and women that you claim to be. Do not be the awful but lawful citizens that you have proven to be so far. You have within your means and within the law the ability to not only deny this license, but to ensure this does not happen to other unsuspecting residents of Milton. Deny the license and reverse the zoning. Because of, because you, as public servants, answer to the public, which includes every one of us in this room, I am calling on you to refuse restrictions on public comments, operate under an open records published policy as a standard protocol, and to support the public outcry for an impartial third-party audit. I am calling on you to do the right thing. I am calling on you to clean up your mess.
Thank you. Will you please call the next speaker?
Mayor, I invite Michael Heinisch to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Michael Heinisch. I reside in the Providence Plantation community at 240 Weatherwood Circle in Milton, and I have so for nearly 12 years with my wife and two school-aged daughters. I'm here today to share my concerns and, I hope, suggestions as they relate to the consideration of the issuance of an alcohol beverage license to DeRose Vintners. I'm adamantly opposed to an alcohol beverage license being issued to DeRose Vintners. Period. This should not be a matter of consideration. This should be a direct denial. You, as members of the city council, have denied us repeatedly our right to a public hearing to formally voice our community's concerns about the possible issuance of this alcohol license. Despite a hearing being advertised five times, we have been denied our right to have our concerns put on the record in a public hearing. This is unacceptable. As such, I urge you to immediately deny the alcohol beverage license applied for by DeRose Vintners. I urge you to do this tonight in lieu of deferring the decision for another month. I urge you to do this in the spirit of a city council that represents the majority of Milton residents and not individual people or entities. If you can't support us, then I can't support you. Thank you.
Thank you. Will you please call the next speaker?
Jack Hayden.
Jack Hayden, 285 Weatherwood Circle. I have to second what somebody else said. I respect the first guy that spoke, but he lives on Cogburn Road. He doesn't live in our neighborhood, so it's easy for him to be in support of something that really doesn't affect him. Last time I was here, I told you I was a 43-year veteran of commercial real estate, and that came with some perks where I know some pretty good real estate attorneys. I spoke with a real estate attorney this week that's very well-respected, does a lot of work, makes a lot of money. Told him the situation. I want to focus on these concessions that, that were made, because I brought that up to him, and he said, well, Jack, he said, the time for those concessions was when this was rezoned. Not now. There was apparently a 30-day appeal period. We didn't know. He said, that's where you could have had the teeth, you could have done deed restrictions, things that ran with the land. He said, this guy gets this liquor license, all these concessions, forget it. He can do whatever he wants to do. He can sell the land, whoever, to whoever, they can do whatever they want to do. So for him to act like he's made these concessions and they're going to be, you know, fact, I haven't, from an attorney says that's not the case. Ken, you're the city attorney. I'd love to hear what your opinion is, but if that's the case, then we have nothing. And I don't see any reason to defer this for another month, hoping that we're not going to keep coming out. We're going to keep coming out. And I, what, where's the concessions going to go? If, if he's saying he's going to take the tasting rooms away and all this stuff, and it doesn't mean anything, then we're wasting time. I, I would suggest you vote on this tonight, and this will end this thing, one way or the other. I mean, keep dragging it out, just doesn't make sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I invite Ms. Laura Bentley to the podium, please.
Mayor, council, I'm Laura Bentley, 2500 Bethany Church Road. As the pastor said... As the pastor said, indeed, our trust and our hope is in you. I am here again tonight to restate support for denial of the alcohol license for Black Merrill Lane. The actions taken by the 2021 council to protect property owners, those property owners, from alcohol sales at farm wineries must be enforced. In May of 2021, the city council instated a moratorium to prohibit the vesting of any farm winery excluding the Painted Horse. I do hope that the council members that were involved in this seven-month process will review those meetings and convey the intent of that work to the new council members. There is no ambiguity. The special use permit is the law. These folks are protected. Your only answer is denial. There is no need to defer, negotiate, or make anyone hold. A public hearing is just that, the place where important decisions are debated publicly. Both the community and the applicant are on equal footing. And for you, they're elected representatives to respond to the information during the advertised hearing. These folks have essentially stopped their lives to protect their community, and it continues with yet another deferral without even the courtesy of opening the public hearing to listen and perhaps respond accordingly. So thankfully, they still have public comment, again, here tonight as their only mechanism to convey community concerns to you. On January 17th, not one of you opposed the recommendations made by the city attorney to significantly reduce public comment. Where would they be tonight? Tonight would be a great night for you, this city council, to put this community's mind at rest and tell us that you will not take on those recommended recommendations for public comment. These folks would have not had any other forum to talk to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Will you please call the next speaker?
Juliette Van Galder. Hello, my name is Juliette Van Galder. I live at 140 Providence Plantation Drive, and I'm opposed to approving a liquor license in my neighborhood. I am a mother of four and a practicing veterinarian. My husband, Jason, and our family moved to Milton in 2020, and we were thrilled to join the tiny community of Providence Plantation. The safe atmosphere of the neighborhood is what attracted us there. There is a mix of different backgrounds and stages of life. We have been, however, perplexed why a city such as Milton, which is known for their family-friendly culture and small-town feel, would be okay with a business that serves and sells alcohol as an event spot that would be allowed in a neighborhood. It just sounds so cheap. Can you imagine a GPS trying to bring you to an event slash winery location and telling you to take a left in a neighborhood? You would think you were lost. We truly feel we have found our forever home at Providence Plantation. Don't cause us to have to move after cheapening our neighborhood. How would you feel if this kind of circus came to your neighborhood or right in your backyard? To conclude, you have denied us, again, our right to a public hearing to voice our community concerns formally about the possible issuance of this alcohol license. Despite being advertised five times, we have been denied our right to have our concerns put on the public record in a public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Will you please call the next speaker?
I call Dara Dwayne.
Good evening. My name is Dara Dwayne, and I live at 300 Sweet Briar Court in the Providence Plantation neighborhood. My wife, my young children, and I absolutely oppose this proposed liquor license application for 13555 Black Merrill Lane. I'll be honest with you all. I don't know all the details or history of this fiasco that some of my neighbors have spoken to and will speak to this evening. I'm just going to make a couple of points, if I may. My first point relates to traffic. Everyone can agree that the traveling, that the traffic traveling through our neighborhood will increase as a result of a commercial winery business located at the furthest point from our neighborhood's front entrance. There is one paved hilly residential road that runs to our neighborhood. To get to the proposed winery location, a vehicle has to drive along this hilly residential road through a bad blind spot at the top of a hill, at the top of the crossroads, by 22 driveway openings to homes, homes with children. There will be an increase in commercial traffic, service traffic, and I'm absolutely sure, event traffic. My family and I moved to this neighborhood because of the quiet semi-rural setting. The main reason I'm sure most families moved to our neighborhood, the main reason I'm sure most families moved to Milton itself. A commercial business, a winery, does not belong in a neighborhood. There are no other wineries located within any other residential neighborhoods within the city of Milton. There are wineries located within Milton, but their entrance and exit points are located off of main roads, not from within a family neighborhood. This is not an appropriate location to operate a commercial winery business. Second point I'd like to make relates to the media and the city council's legacy. Reports on this issue have already been in the Atlanta Journal-Constitution and WSB-TV Atlanta. Appen Media has run articles about it in the Milton Herald. I believe there's some media reporters here this evening. What is this going to say about you, the Milton City Council? If a commercial winery is given a liquor license within the confines of a family neighborhood in Milton? What kind of future precedent are you establishing for Milton if you allow this to happen? Do you want to be known as the city council who approved a liquor license within a residential family neighborhood? Or will you be known as a city council who did the right thing and did not approve the liquor license? As my neighbor said last month, this decision will be part of your legacy, your political legacy, and any potential political aspirations. Everyone in the city of Milton will remember you for your decision on this liquor license proposal. You can be 100% sure of that. I use the word neighborhood a dozen times in these comments. I'll use it a couple more times. Our neighborhood is absolutely not the place to establish a commercial winery with a liquor license. You have to believe this already. You have to already know this. I kindly ask you to think this proposal through. I ask you to think about the young families and children in our neighborhood. I ask you to put yourselves in our shoes. I ask you to put your children in our children's shoes. I ask you to vote this ridiculous liquor license proposal down. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Will you please call the next speaker?
Tina Kendall.
Good evening. My name is Tina Kendall. I live at 310 Sweet Briar Court. I'm opposed to the winery in my neighborhood. When my husband and I purchased our neighborhood, our house in the neighborhood 24 years ago, we were looking for a home in a quiet suburban neighborhood. We weren't looking for a home in a neighborhood with, in a golfing community or something that had a country club or anything. We were looking for a quiet neighborhood. We did see the gated community that was being built off our neighborhood, and we asked about that. And we were assured that this was going to be a small luxury community with just a few homes that would have horse stables, but that was, that was just going to be it, nothing that would significantly increase the traffic into our neighborhood. We, we have two rescue dogs that we like to walk. There are no sidewalks, but the streets are lined with trees. It's very pretty, but it forces you to walk your dogs on the roads. We don't mind, but you do have to look out for cars. While I hear that children like to play indoors these days, I know when we were raising our daughter, she loved riding her electric scooter along the road, and she even ran through the neighborhood and collected fireflies in the summertime. And we trusted her to be able to run through the neighborhood and collect fireflies. And I would think it would be a shame to deny the kids in the neighborhood those kind of joys of just being able to do that. And I wouldn't think that you would want to, to keep them from doing that. You have denied us, again, our public right, our right to a public hearing to voice our community's concerns formally about possible assurance of an alcohol license. Despite being advertised five times, we have been denied our right to have our concerns put into public record. I ask that you, you vote on this tonight and keep our neighborhood safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I invite Mary Crunk to the podium.
Good evening. I'm Mary Crunk, and I live at 600 Hickory Mill Lane. My comments this evening are about the final recommendations for city council meeting efficiencies that the city attorney presented to council at the January 17th special call meeting. While the meeting was called to provide council with training on the Open Meetings Act, which city council admitted to violating at a closed meeting held on September 18th, 2023, one component of that training ethics was skipped over that evening. Instead, the city attorney gave these final recommendations. And this prompts a couple questions. Who approved these recommendations being added to the special call meeting? And why were these recommendations so important that they replaced ethics training, particularly since they have yet to be addressed by council? Tonight, I'm focusing on recommendations two and three, which address public comment. During the special call meeting, the city attorney recommended that all public comment be split into two sections, one before the consent agenda and one before new business, which is toward the end of the agenda. He then further proposed in the February 8th edition of the Milton Herald that public comment be restricted to two 30-minute sections with a limit of three minutes per speaker. To understand how these final recommendations impact public comment and meeting efficiency, we need to understand our current processes. According to our city charter, general public comment occurs before the consent agenda at the beginning of the meeting, and this is the time for comment on items that are not being discussed on that night's agenda. There's no limit to the number of general public comments that can be made, and each speaker is allowed five minutes. In 2023, general public comments averaged four minutes, I'm sorry, four, per regular council meeting and lasted an average of 12 minutes. Public comment on specific items, agenda items, then occurs during each specific topic. First, staff gives a presentation which includes some information that the public has access to online, and often they will include information that is brand-new to the public. Next, the public gives their comment, which in part has been informed by that staff presentation. And lastly, council then discusses the item and in some cases votes on it. Following the current process allows those who are speaking before council to be educated about the agenda item and share their thoughts on that specific agenda on it right before council discusses it, which then allows you on council to keep the views of your constituents top of mind during your deliberations. Contrast our current process with what the city attorney's recommendations are, which would force general public comment, public hearing comments like alcohol licenses, zoning agenda items like rezonings and variances, and unfinished business into one 30-minute section at the very beginning of the meeting with three minutes per speaker, or forces those with general public comment to wait until almost the end of the meeting for a second opportunity for public comment, where they might be competing for a chance to speak with those who are speaking on new business items. So what's a problem with these recommendations? In addition to general public comment, there could be anywhere from three to 10 agenda items that people could speak to in a given evening. Looking at the data from 2023, slightly more than half of those comments come from zoning and unfinished business items. With only three minutes per speaker, and at a meeting where some weighty and important topics are being discussed and public interest is high, how would the city clerk decide who gets to speak and which topics are worthy of public comment when only 10 to 15 people would have the opportunity to speak? Or will people need to arrive at 5:00 PM to submit their comment cards? Without listening to the staff report and presentation, how does the public get a full understanding of the issues in order to make an informed comment? And how would you on council keep track of those public comments about the agenda items that could be discussed an hour or so later? Are you going to be taking notes on each public comment and then refer back to the notes after you hear staff's presentation? And what if a citizen has a general public comment and a comment on a zoning agenda item or unfinished business, which can happen? Will they be forced to choose the one topic that is most important to them or split their three minutes between topics and risk not clearly conveying their opinions to council? These are a few reasons why recommendations two and three would not increase meeting efficiency, which is the stated objective of those final recommendations. They would, however, severely and unnecessarily limit valuable public comment, create an unfair burden on city staff to choose who speaks and who does not get to speak, and cause extra work and confusion for council. Please, council, at your next opportunity, send a clear message that you support and value public engagement and public input by rejecting all the recommendations that reduce or restrict the opportunity for the same type of public comment that created and sustains this city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Lanham to the podium, please.
Hello, I'm Steve Lanham, 220 Weatherwood Circle, Milton, Georgia. I stand in total opposition to the applicant's application for a liquor license at 13555 Black Merrill Lane. My personal opinion is that this whole thing should be void from the beginning. I was told by attorney friend, void ab initio would be the term. It was wrong from the beginning. Too many mistakes were made. It's wrong today, and it needs to be gone. The other areas of my concern are two. One, the applicant has stated that he wants to grow grapes and make wine and sell that wine to festivals and restaurants. I have asked in a public forum, how old are these vines? Were they a year old when you planted them? Were they three years old when you planted them? How long have they been growing? Is it actually, in true point of fact, a harvestable crop at this point? If it's not at this point, how many years down the road is it going to be before they can actually harvest usable fruit from those vines? The second thing is, I understand, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that these are muscadine grapes. Check with your local wine store. Is there a big demand for muscadine grape wine in this market? Perhaps there would be a better market in the state of Georgia's prison system, but it's not going to be a popular item at a local restaurant or festival. I want to recall one thing the applicant said earlier. He called out an instance where a neighbor of his had been bullied or stopped or blocked in the roadway. My question to that is, was this your neighbor that was stealing our opposition sides? To carry that a step further. And this is really directed at the city manager and the chief of police. We have recently been the victim of a well-organized, well-managed, and technically superior organized crime ring. So sophisticated that they cloned an exact replica of one of the applicant's household member's vehicle, drove it through the neighborhood, and removed opposition sides. That's truly amazing. I leave that. Figure it out if you will. Thank you.
Thank you. Will you please call the next speaker?
The next public comment card is Deborah Lanham, and she just wants on the record that she is in opposition of the 13555 Black Merrill Lane.
that she is in opposition of the 13555 Black Merrill Lane. I next invite Laura Case to the podium.
Hi, my name is Laura Case. I live at 325 Sweet Briar Court, and I oppose a liquor license at 13555 Black Merrill Lane. This has been deferred since, I believe, October, when you have heard from many neighbors and neighborhoods surrounding that we do not want this to occur. I asked, "Would you want this in your own neighborhood?" Never got a response, but I'm assuming no. You were voted into office to represent all of Milton, but it seems you're favoring Why not listen and think of all the concern Milton citizens? I've heard about the thousands of emails amongst council, city workers, Jim, others, about the liquor license and many other things that we don't know about, but now I know about it. Why do you want this to occur so badly? Jim is one resident of Milton. What about the others that object this liquor license? Why do you care so much about this? I just don't understand this. Why can't you just say, "I'm sorry, but we deny this liquor license" instead of deferring it? This attitude reminds me of my narcissistic and abusive late father. He kept hurting us day after day. And one day, when I was 35, I finally said, "Dad, why do you keep hurting us and why can't you say, 'I'm sorry'?" He says, "Because I can't, because I'll keep hurting you. I can't say it." Dad finally told us, literally called all three of his kids on his deathbed and said, "I'm sorry." The city giving a liquor license will be abusive to the community? Because, excuse me, because if something horrible occurs from the results of what you're saying, you can't say, "I'm sorry" to and deny it, the grieving, excuse me, because if something horrible happens and the result is that you'll be saying, "I'm sorry," to a grieving family, when you had the power to stop it from the very beginning? Don't forget, you just paid out $35 million to lawsuit to a death of someone that could have been prevented. That unfortunate accident occurred, and someone's precious life was taken and ended by the city's negligence. I'm sorry for the family's loss. Do better for your city. Again, oppose this liquor license, and don't forget, we will remember this outcome for the next election. Bless your all's hearts for not thinking of the community of Milton.
Thank you. Will we please call the next speaker?
Sarah Moen.
My address is 130 Providence Plantation Drive. Last Monday, I sent a letter to Mr. Gerard, the members of city council, and the city manager. It was brought to my attention that at least one member of council never received my email. Not surprising, since over the last two months, several of us have had our email addresses blocked by the city server. Regardless, I'm providing copies for each of you tonight. I'll break the email down quickly for the public. First, on May 24th, 2021, the city council imposed an emergency moratorium pertaining to farm wineries. Specifically, as clarified by Mr. Gerard, the moratorium prohibited the acceptance of alcohol applications, building permit applications, and land disturbance permit applications, the sorts of permits someone might want to do to become vested with respect to a farm winery use in AG1. Second, on June 21st, 2021, an advertised public hearing was held and the moratorium was extended for 120 days. Third, on October 18th, 2021, the city council discusses the consideration of an ordinance to amend Chapter 4 of the Milton Code of Ordinances and to update various sections to clarify intent. It is established on this night that Painted Horse is the only by right farm winery in Milton. Mr. Gerard clarifies that alcohol licenses are granted annually and that every time the city modifies its alcohol code, if you want to get a license for the next year, you've got to comply with the new requirements. Finally, on December 20th, 2021, the city council approves a new use permit for farm wineries. This permit would require all requests to go through a public hearing process and adhere to several proposed standards that were intended to provide sufficient protection of adjacent and nearby properties. This special use permit process would need to be completed and passed before an applicant would be able to apply for an alcohol license permit. Why are we here tonight? Well, for starters, this is the fifth advertised public hearing for the issuance of an alcohol license in our neighborhood. It's also the fifth public hearing that has been called as deferred even prior to an official public vote being taken. Despite this, we are determined to exercise our right to speak and have our comments on the record during public comments, even though we have a legal expectation to make them on the record during the public hearing for the advertised agenda item. We are also here because the city refuses to review the history relating to this applicant and instead has decided to negotiate with him in hopes that he withdraws his application. Specifically, according to Mr. Krokoff in an interview with App and Media, whether or not the farm winery is vested or secured by right according to the law is not clear. Really? The moratorium imposed on May 24th and extended on June 21st, 2021, were imposed to stop vesting, according to the city's attorney, and Mr. Rosenberg was informed of the moratorium personally by Robin McDonald. In an email dated June 18th, 2021, Robin writes, "Hi, Jim, I hope you are doing well. Lisa from the finance department is out today, but she wanted me to let you know that the mayor and city council approved an emergency moratorium on various types of permits, including alcohol related to farm wineries. Unfortunately, it impacts your application for an alcohol license, as they are extending the moratorium this coming Monday for 120 additional days. Here is the link. Lisa wanted to know how you wanted us to handle the paperwork and associated checks. Thanks, Robin." If Mr. Rosenberg didn't keep up with the moratorium, changing zoning and alcohol codes, and pressed forward with his winery project, that doesn't vest him, that just makes him guilty of making foolish business decisions. If the city is negotiating with him to pay him for his silence, that's wrong, especially after two council members told us that the city would not pay for a legal battle to defend our neighborhood, and after another told us the city would not pay for a third-party audit of the situation. Taxpayers, let that sink in. The city refused to use our tax dollars to defend us, but they are entertaining the idea of using our tax dollars to appease the applicant. Again, Mr. Rosenberg fell under the moratorium and could not be vested, yet he chose to move forward with his business plans, and now we are going to pay for that. Council members, staff has made some huge mistakes with this issue, and contrary to what we have been told, that those mistakes were made in good faith, let me assure you, no governing body ever makes that many mistakes in good faith. Now someone is asking you to commit political suicide by either voting for the application or working on another private negotiation. I don't believe you have received accurate information regarding this situation and implore you to do your own research before putting your heads on the chopping block for the individual or individuals who have made all these good faith mistakes. Read my email, watch the council meeting videos. Mr. Rosenberg is not vested, his application should be pulled, and the proper process and codes should be followed. Thank you.
Thank you. Will we please call the next speaker?
I invite James Hughes to the podium.
Okay. Mr. Hughes? Oh, there we go.
Good evening. My name is James Hughes. I live at 205 Weatherwood Circle in Providence Plantation. The Rosenburgers came into an area that was long-established neighborhood, zoned residential. We have lived in this neighborhood, and we're so proud to have lived in this neighborhood since 1992, 32 years, and $200,000 later in property taxes. I can't believe we're standing in front of you. All of us who live in this neighborhood, we've acted in good faith, and as good citizens, getting permits as required, renovations, paying taxes, being a community, raising our children, supporting the schools. He had to get special dispensation to get a zoning change. Why not land where that is, why not buy land where that's not necessary? Why would the board ignore, this is what I really don't understand, why would the board ignore the rights of all of these people just for one person? In order to grant one person a liquor license? The Rosenburgers and the city council have not been fair about this. The only reason we know is because I'm rehabbing from chemo, and I happen to be walking and seeing the sign. The sign that has been placed since October, and this has been rectified finally, it is placed in front of the subdivision where it should have been. But since October to like the last two weeks, you and everybody else who would go through Providence Plantation would never have seen this sign, had no notice at all. And that's a problem, because we want to make sure we just know. In closing, I just want to say, we love this place. This is a great place. It's private. It's got really nice people. The one good thing I have to say through all this is I've gotten to meet more of my neighbors than I ever did. I do please ask you, just to pull this, let this go and let us go back to our lives in Providence Plantation. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Kathy Cooper.
Good evening, city council. My name is Kathy Cooper, and I live at, I barely see you with these on, I live at 14385 Cogburn Road. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak, and thank you for serving. It's a bit of a thankless job, I know. I'm here in support of the Rosenburgers' alcohol license. I have three points to highlight briefly tonight. First, the necessity of preserving and promoting the unique character of this community that we all love. Secondly, the importance of fairness and even-handed application of our community rules. And finally, how critical it is to avoid acceding to the unfounded fears of a very vocal minority. Milton is a city like no other suburban community, which is the reason my family and so many others here choose to live here. We enjoy growth underpinned by a rural equestrian and agricultural heritage. We offer what I've said to friends is somewhat of an upscale Mayberry kind of feel. We enjoy larger parcels of land, mom-and-pop retail establishments, unique restaurants right in the middle of neighborhoods, and amazing community music and other festivals, and yes, farm wineries. I believe it is incumbent upon our representatives in the council to keep in mind the uniqueness of our community and continue to develop appropriately, so we are not just another cookie-cutter suburban community. Without maligning other suburban cities, we're not Marietta, and we don't want to be. I also believe that it is the privilege and responsibility of this elected council to ensure that all members of our community are treated equally and with fairness. Think of instances in our world where the health, livelihood, and happiness of a large segment of people was subjugated to the fears of those in power. It doesn't end well. Fairness ensures that every individual, regardless of their background and circumstances, is treated with dignity and respect under the law. It fosters trust in our institutions and promotes a sense of unity and belonging to our citizens. Too often, we see instances where rules are applied arbitrarily or inconsistently, leading to feelings of injustice and resentment. This undermines the foundation of democracy and erodes public confidence in our governance. When we fail to uphold the principle of fairness, we not only betray the trust of our citizens, but also sow the seeds of division and discord within our community. We must strive to create a community where everyone has an equal opportunity to succeed, and the rule of law is paramount. We have seen concessions upon concessions from the Rosenburgers to the point, and let's be honest, that their entire original enterprises, the enterprise has been eliminated. No tasting room, no bar, no traffic. In my opinion, that's a shame. Now, all they want to do is get a business license so they can run their business just like others in the area, and specifically in Milton, other instances such as Painted Horse. Their wines can now be found in restaurants. Painted Horse is in my neighborhood, and we like it. We think it's part of the unique fabric of the community. It's a great addition. The Rosenburgers are no longer even asking to do what is already here. It is the council's duty to treat everyone fairly. Additionally, it is the responsibility of this council not to fall prey to the tyranny of a vocal minority. It's a phenomenon where a small group wields disproportionate influence, often through the manipulation of unfounded fear. Fear, when left unchecked, has the power to cloud judgment and distort reality. It can be a potent tool in the hands of those who seek to maintain control or suppress dissent. Too often, we see this fear weaponized by a vocal minority to advance their own agenda, regardless of its consequences for the broader community. We cannot allow ourselves to be held captive by the irrational fears of a few. We must resist the temptation to succumb to fear-mongering tactics that seek to divide our community and sow discord. Instead, we must stand firm in our commitment to reason, compassion, and justice. It is incumbent upon this council as leaders to challenge the tyranny of the minority and ensure that decisions are guided by evidence, law, reason, and the common good. This council must be diligent in protecting the rights and the liberties of all members of our community. Please do not be swayed by the loud voices of fear based upon incorrect information, and I'm not sure what else. Instead, let us strive to create and ensure a unique community where justice, equality, and solidarity reign. I implore this council and the members of our community gathered here and elsewhere to work in concert, armed with facts, to fairly continue to build. Together, we can overcome the tyranny of the minority and build a future that is worthy of the amazing city we have all created. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Will we please call the next speaker?
Jessica Buxton.
Jessica Buxton, 75, Providence Plantation Drive. We are here tonight to adamantly express to you guys that we want this alcohol license denied. Over the past four months, we have been researching, discovering all the things that have led us to this point. It is our finding that Robin McDonald and Steve Krokoff and Jim Rosenberg are at the center of why we are here in front of you today. I personally struggled through this with thinking that maybe my good city just made a little mistake. Maybe Jim didn't try to pull a fast one over his neighbors. Maybe the city did lead Jim on, but after looking at all the evidence, it is clear that both the city and Jim were intentionally misleading. Let's start back with the letter that was sent to us. That letter that was sent to us said, "Cup to AG1 to build a single-family home." The letter that sent from Jim said the exact same thing. His hearing on May 10th was for a zoning to build a single-family home. You guys approved his building permit on May 6th. If that sign was for to build a single-family home, guess what? It was deceitful. It was intentionally misleading to keep us at home and keep us to not worry about the fact that somebody's building a single-family home with a barn. We live in Milton. Doesn't matter. He had zebras and horses before. I didn't care if the man built a home, didn't care if he had a barn. What we all know now is the barn was renovated in 2020 and was no longer a barn. That was another thing that was kept out of the public's eye. As Sarah has given you guys a nice little rundown of timeline, I'm going to kind of go over a couple of things, too. Like I said, May 10th was the hearing, but his building permit was granted on May 6th. June 18th, sorry, I don't usually read off this stuff, I just wing it. So, May 24th, the city imposes the 35-day moratorium. From the May 10th to May 24th, this is the only time that Jim is considered that he could be vested. Originally, I was thinking May to December. Well, after learning more and understanding that you actually had a moratorium, I didn't know that, but now I do. That 14-day window is his only time to be vested, not May to December. June 18th, Robinson's an email to Jim, let him know that the moratorium will affect his process. June 21st, 2021, a public hearing for the extension of the moratorium is in the agenda and voted on to extend an extra 120 days. Mr. Rosenberg did not show up to this meeting to express his concerns or desires for his beloved crown jewel of Milton. December 21st, 2021, in the hearing for the new farm winery ordinances, it is clear that the council members discussed the ins and outs of all this. Ken Gerard states that this will change everything. Farm winery will no longer be a by right, it will be a special use permitted. The city had learned from its mistakes with Painted Horse Winery, and the city agrees and writes in laws pertaining to farm wineries. And you guys even spell out a map of showing where you can and cannot have a farm winery. The biggest thing is not in a residential neighborhood. January 22nd, 2022, the moratorium expires. Throughout 2022, Jim continues to build a single-family home, receives a business license. There are some emails exchanged from the city on this permit issue and things he's doing to the property and stuff. Steve Krokoff and Robin are answering him. But then that brings us to June 4th, 2023. We are a year and a half past the time that you guys passed the laws for farm wineries, and it's a special and it's a special use permit. On June 4th, Jim applies for his alcohol license. On June 4th, he signs a paper, smits all of his information, page 2, number 6. Let me read this. It says, "For the applicant," which he initials, "read the City of Milton ordinances requiring alcohol beverages as recent amendments have impacted your application license type for most..." I'm sorry, I get frazzled with this. "Please read the Milton ordinances required by alcohol beverage as recent amendments may impact your license type for the most up-to-date revisions as approved by the city adopted on October 17, 2022." Even though the city has laws pertaining to farm wineries, and it is his responsibility to check these codes...
Time's expired, Ms. Buxton. How much?
That's fine. Robin knows that this shouldn't have happened. She signed a temporary alcohol license. Steve signed in a temporary alcohol license. No public notice was to us at all until October 5th. That is breaking your own laws by giving him an alcohol license and not requiring him to sign a special use permit. Deny it. Make him go by the rules that you put into place, and we'll be done with this, because he won't qualify.
Thank you, Ms. Buxton. Please call the next speaker?
Gary Buxton to the podium.
My name is Gary Buxton, 75, Providence Plantation Drive. You know, I'll just start off with, you know, none of us want to be here. I know none of you guys want to be sitting here listening to us. You know, I had a separate speech prepared, but after some of the comments made tonight, I thought I addressed a few of them. So first off, I mean, I would say, I think it's fairly clear now that mistakes have been made on both sides. My, I have a problem, though, with Jim trying to sell this victim narrative. You know, he said in the city council meeting specifically, he made the comment to the planning committee, which I think the planning committee weighed very heavily, and of which I feel like the city council weighed the planning committees very heavily, and that statement was, "All my neighbors are for it, they love it, they can't wait for it." I think this is pretty telling. I think that also saying that, you know, everything that was just followed by the city's direction, a letter was sent, a letter was sent from Jim and his wife to us, or those of us that were in a four-mile radius. It said nothing of a winery, right? And so, he started this off as a winery and event center for over, you know, up to 100 people, but then somehow the dilution happens that when it gets to a letter to us, none of that's included. I don't think that's by accident. So even though he was transparent to the city, it's clear that he wasn't to us, and had that letter been transparent, this conversation would have happened in 2021, and none of us would have had all the brain damage from this whole thing. He mentioned a comment about, you know, you know, kind of the ability to kind of position a narrative of, you know, his neighbors being harassed and stopped in the neighborhood. That was me. I stopped his neighbor from stealing signs off my property. And as you can tell, I'm a pretty, you know, fly-off-the-cuff kind of person. I have it all on dash cam, and it was just approaching someone and saying, "Why are you stealing signs off my property?" And to which they said, "Let me give them back." And that was it. Unfounded fears, you know, was mentioned, and what was it? I wrote it down. Tyranny of the minority. Well, I think we can see who the minority here is, but unfounded fears, I mean, that's gaslighting at its finest. I think that to call our fears unfounded, I mean, is just pathetic, you know? We're all here, we're worried for our neighborhood, we don't want to be here, we don't want to be with our families and kids, just like you guys. Then, Constitution Guy had a good point about precedent. You know, it is terrible to deny due process, and that's what was denied to us with our inability to speak in 2021. And, you know, in terms of precedent, if everyone with AG1, if we're going to call that precedent, that everyone with AG1 at that time could become a farm winery because they were AG1 at that time, then what's the point of even having any of these laws, right? Everyone with AG1 would just be able to walk in and apply. So I don't agree with that. And the point about, you know, in terms of precedent, too, Painted Horse started with just tastings only, right? And now look at what it's become. But the original approval, if I'm not mistaken, was 10 people limit, you know, certain number per day. Now, you know, you can drive by it at pretty much any time, and it's a full event center. And then, you know, I can't state any of this better than either Jeff or Sarah Moen did. I think we should just run their comments on loop. But, you know, you know, if we look at what we can kind of go from here, I mean, I heard you say, Ken, at one point, you know, "Hey, I'll do whatever the city tells me, I can be an attack dog if you want me to be an attack dog." That can be an attack dog. Let them hunt, right? Let the city do the right thing, protect all the people here that are begging you for your help. I mean, literally, we're here begging for your guys' help. Please help us.
Thank you.
Mayor, I invite Michael Chambers to the podium. Michael Chambers, please.
Mr. Chambers?
I live at 275 Weatherwood Circle. Just a little history, I moved my family out here six years ago. Quiet family neighborhoods. We moved from Johns Creek, it was growing way too fast, we didn't like it. We liked Milton. My kids have since graduated high school, moved on to college, but that's no concern of yours, but my wife and I decided to stay. We like our neighborhood, it's quiet, there's wildlife. I don't want it disrupted. Look at what Milton was. I understand that there needs to be some prosperity, and you've done it here, but it doesn't need to be in my neighborhood. There's families, few old people like me, but there's young families that come in every day, the house comes up for sale. And my opinion here would be not to impede on those young families. Don't put them at risk, as we heard, it only takes one, one. And you're always saying, "Boy, I wish I hadn't done that," because I'm carrying that weight on my back now. So think about it, think long and hard before you think about giving a liquor license, that the only way in and the only way out is through my neighborhood, because that's not what we want. And I don't think you want it, or you were conscious that a decision I made hurt somebody that shouldn't have been hurt in the first place. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers. We please call the next speaker?
Is Mr. Craig Franklin here? Then that concludes general public comment.
Okay. I will close public comment, and we will move on to consent agenda.
Mayor, that first item is approval of the February 21st, 2024 Regular City Council Meeting Minutes, Agenda Item Number 24081. Item B is approval of the Financial Statements and Investment Report for period ending January 31st of 2024, Agenda Item Number 24082. C is approval of a First Amendment to Residential Lease Agreement between the City of Milton and Timothy J. Cagle and Charles, Janey and Charles Cagle to extend the lease terms at the city-owned property of Bethany Bend an additional two months, Agenda Item Number 24083. D is approval of a Change Order Number 1 to a Professional Services Agreement between the City of Milton and Pond and Company, Inc. for Design Services for Cox Road Intersections. Agenda Item Number 24084. E is approval of a Professional Services Agreement between the City of Milton and Davis Engineering and Surveying LLC for surveying services at the city-owned green space property on Web Road, Agenda Item Number 24085. Next is approval of a memorandum of agreement by and between Georgia Department of Transportation and the City of Milton for funding of right-of-way on PI 0016580, Hopewell Road at Chicken Creek Bridge Replacement, Agenda Item Number 24086. G is approval of a memorandum of agreement by and between Georgia Department of Transportation and the City of Milton for city funding of right-of-way on PI 0016581, Birmingham Road at Chicken Creek Tributary Bridge Replacement, Agenda Item Number 24087. H is approval of a memorandum of agreement by and between Georgia Department of Transportation and the City of Milton for city funding of right-of-way on P10016582, Freemanville Road at Cooper Sandy Creek Bridge Replacement. It is Agenda Item Number 24088. I is approval of a Professional Services Agreement between the City of Milton and the Georgia Associations of Chief of Police for a Promotional Assessment Center, Agenda Item Number 24089. Our final consent agenda item is J, approval of subdivision plats and revisions. The first development is Joel Protho and Mary Protho at 14245 Thompson Road. Its land lot wants 745 and 746, District 2, Section 2, a minor plat to subdivide one parcel of land into two legal lots of record, a total of 6.955 acres and a density of 0.29 lots per acre. The next development is Excel Capital Construction at 12450 Charlotte Drive, Land Lot 1171 and 1172, its District 2, Section 2, a minor plat revision, and this revision is to convert the private right-of-way to a public right-of-way and identify the sanitary sewer easement location, a total of 4.2512 acres and a density of 0.47 lots per acre. Mayor Jamison?
Thank you. Do you have a motion on the consent agenda?
Mayor, make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Okay. I have a motion from Councilman Jacobus and a second from Councilman Verhoff to approve the consent agenda as read. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. So there are no reports and presentations, no first presentations, the public hearing item has been deferred, and there's no zoning agenda items. We have deferred the unfinished business and new business into the next regularly scheduled meeting. Is there any mayor and council reports? Anybody? Nothing going on? Okay. We do not have an executive session, so I will take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion from Councilman Jacobus and a second from Councilman Cookerly to adjourn the meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.